The city council meeting to order, I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call, please?
Kim Cohn.
Here.
Craig Koochak.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follin.
Here.
Wiley Stewart.
Here.
You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our February 19th meeting. If I could have a motion to either amend or approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Second, motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First thing tonight is a approval of CF1 tax abatement form for Dolco Technoplex. Phyllis and I met with Greg Meyer and, help me, Dan Beer? Is it Dan Beer? And...
They are in compliance.
Yeah. Okay, she didn't bring it in with her, but yeah, they're very well into compliance. Their salaries are way up, their employees are up. They're not up as much as they expected them to be at this time, but they are up. I guess the biggest thing to mention to you all is that when they came in and they applied for the tax abatement for...
And this abatement is 2016's abatement, the one that they're holding off on in 2018.
Right, yeah.
For real estate endorsement.
Yeah, when they came in this last time to apply for another real estate abatement for real estate, they have not done that yet and they won't be doing it. It's kind of been tabled, it's kind of been tabled. And what we just told them today is that whenever they are ready to go, to basically just resubmit, start from scratch. So the real estate improvements has not happened out there. But as far as the payroll, it is all in compliance and I would recommend that, or look for a motion to allow me to sign that document tomorrow. Salute. Motion and a second to approve the CF1 tax abatement form for Dolco Technoplex. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Brian Clemmons is here from Decatur Main Street. He's the new Main Street President, taking over for Wiley Stewart, who's served that in how many years were he the President?
Three.
Three long, fun-filled years, right?
Tyler told it to me.
And yeah. And now it's Brian's turn to have fun and Brian just wants to make a little presentation about where Main Street's been and where they're going. I have one.
His though is updated just a little bit.
Oh, yours is updated, I will take one then.
Ooh, I added some court stuff.
Oh, yeah. We did hear on Brian back next time. Ooh.
Well, as you all know, I am Brian Clemmons and I'm here as President of Main Street tonight. So what you have in front of you there is something that we are using to kind of track what's been done, what future projects there are, just kind of make sure that we're staying on track with some of the things that we're involved with. As you're aware, lots happened over the last eight years, going back to the sculpture tour, and certainly there's been a lot since I moved here in 2014. I promise that has nothing to do with me moving here, just purely coincidental. But...
It was bringing your wife back.
It was bringing my wife back, that's right. But it was interesting, like the first few years coming here, you know, really trying to get involved in the community about 2015, talking with some of the residents and getting a feel for their thoughts on Decatur. And you have some people that were hopeful for what Decatur had in store and then you have others that are like, I just basically live here, I'll work here. So seeing kind of some of that add to through here. Looking at what was presented for Stellar back in 2015, that was a lot for some people to take in, I think, and I think some people were reluctant to really believe that those type of things could happen here. But as we move forward and some of those ideas started to become reality, that's when you start seeing, I started seeing the ship really make its turn slow, but it was making its turn. Founder's Park emerged from, you know, a building that was once there. The downtown facade program opened an avenue for businesses to update their storefronts, making downtown look even nicer. Then new sidewalks and streetlights from Macklin Bridge to Third Street. The community came together and donated $72,000 towards Madison Street Plaza and that was completed in 2018. The Thursday night concert series gave people a reason to be excited about coming to downtown on Thursday night. Downtown businesses started to invest in themselves and some of them are even looking at possible uses for their second story of their building. We're seeing new businesses in Decatur. We've had a new festival every year for the last three years start up. So you know, we're really seeing, well, and we also have the current Hannah Nutman campaign that's going on. So we're really seeing that, in my opinion, Decatur is very much alive right now. People seem to be very excited with everything that's going on and with what the future potentially holds here, which is exciting. So we have a lot of momentum. And to kind of keep moving forward, one of the things that Main Street would like to recommend, and I know you're already kind of talking about it, is moving or shifting focus and really looking in at the second street, streetscapes. And we already have a plan in place. I know there are some things that we need to work through, money I know is a big one. But I think if we could potentially, the reason we're bringing it up now is because we have Five Points, the Five Points enhancement that we're looking at here, what, 2021, 2022? And it potentially could be phased in a way that we have all this done by the time the Five Points intersection is ready to start construction. It'd be nice to do it on the front end because, you know, we've already got all this done out here on Monroe and up through from Macklin Bridge to Third Street and kind of continuing on from that and making that project really flow out to the Five Points. But I think with focusing in on what we're doing with the streetscapes, it's really going to give Decatur even more of a lift and, you know, we're starting to see with some of the things that are going on that we have people that are living here that are starting to think of ideas of, well, how can I raise money or how can I do this? And I think everything that's been going on, especially here in the last four or five years, is really fostering that. The young people, fighting against the older generations, the younger people are really getting excited about what's going on and that's great because we can always use the help with that. So just wanted to come and recommend really taking a look at that.
Yep. Which leads us into the discussion that we had a little bit earlier about streetscaping. And you can hang tight for that if you want. Melissa, if you want to pull the streetscaping information back up on the screen. Decatur Main Street, Melissa, I'll kind of let you go through and list what their suggestions as an advisory committee going to work.
Yes.
Sure.
I haven't spoken to you.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Can we shut it off up here and turn it back on? No?
Nope.
I mean, what we're looking for tonight? A commitment that we're going to proceed and pursue the streetscapes? I mean, we're not looking to make specific decisions on what the design elements are, right? I mean, this is a, are we committed to moving forward with this? What kind of funding do we have set aside for streetscapes? I know we had money set aside to apply. We have $100,000, I know, set aside that we were going to use if we applied for an OCRE grant. And since then, I think that we've kind of talked about that OCRE grant and how it costs us a lot more to actually do it through a grant and we'd rather go it alone.
The other thing I would suggest is that there's still money sitting at the capital campaign, which was originally done back in 2015.
Right.
And when streetscapes was a big part of the Stellar application.
Right.
We went out and said, here's all the Phase 1 projects, here's what we're raising money for, it's not limited to these, but that's what we're trying to accomplish, okay? All of that, with the exception of, well, we know Five Points, that's happening, it's not going to require, shouldn't require individual contributions towards that. So what remains is the streetscapes and that would complete, really, that initial strategic investment plan that we adopted in 2015. Right? So if there's money that is remaining there, I think that needs to be committed towards this and that could be additional. And maybe it is only that first portion of what we need to do in front of the new loft project or how far can that go? I think that's a wide use of what the money that remains and what people donated towards those projects.
I'm sorry, what?
There's $60,000 mentioned for the OCRE grant.
Well, I thought it was 100.
It's over, Melissa, you remember, it's over 100, what remains.
In the 150 range.
I guess my only question is, I don't want to step on the design committee's toes by any means, but they're coming, asking us to proceed with this. Are we just going with their design and proceeding? Or, I don't want to get to, there's a cost estimate sitting on our desk, everything has been decided, what are we deciding?
And that's what they're making recommendations on what, there is no specific this is the design, we haven't adopted anything.
Right, so are they asking for guidance?
No, they're asking, they're just wanting to make a recommendation to us, advise us.
Just the next phase.
I just want to kind of work through that, what we've already kind of created. Because we're focused in a lot on what's going on with downtown and everything and that just continues on with things that we're already looking at. So it's just a recommendation of shifting that focus back to the streetscapes.
And whether we want to go it on our own or, you know, get more asphalt in, which I don't feel like that's really where we're leaning towards.
Jeremy texted me, or excuse me, emailed me and he said, ask for concrete. Now, this is just for doing concrete, this isn't streetlights, this isn't any pavers. To do concrete from the center line of Madison Street all the way to Monroe Street is 450 feet. And his rule of thumb on what to do to do that all in concrete, $38,812. That's what he said on the phone also, he says, it's not, this isn't a big project. Is this for the sidewalks on both sides? This side. One side. $38,812 if it was just all concrete. Now, we've got streetlights, we have, you know, we've already got...
Trash cans.
Trash cans. Couple of benches we would need, maybe. We have to make the decision whether or not you want to put trees out there. You'd have to make a decision on how much pavers you want to run out along the edge, if you want to run papers. Personally, I think the papers should make it sharper. I'm not of the mind that it needs to be a half the sidewalk, but something would look cool. And I don't think, you're right, I don't think we need to decide anything specific tonight, but yet.
I think we should get serious and say we are doing this.
That's what we need to make the decision.
I agree with that, but I think we need, what you're asking for us right now is discussion on what we think is going to be, what we ought to bid on.
Yeah.
I disagree, I mean, I don't want to get an architect involved.
I agree.
I mean, we've already picked out the streetlights, the benches, the trash cans. We've made the Founder's Park a focal point on the north side. We've made the Plaza a focal point coming into Second Street. I got an article, I read an article from, and I'm not shooting anything down about trees, but I'm gonna. This burn said to remove, I don't say trees in the downtown area, this was Saturday's paper, and they're basically pulling all the trees out of their downtown area, pulling all the grates and filling it in because it's heat the concrete. And then it's also, it's the bird droppings that are a real mess to clean up. I think if we're truthfully going to pursue trees, I think we need to go up and down the corridor and touch base with the people that are the actual store owners that are going to be maintaining their front sidewalk and find out what their ideas are because they're the ones that's going to be shoveling it off, they're going to be, the ones that's going to have to, they're people that are going to come into their storefronts, are going to be walking around benches, trash cans, streetlights, trees, grates. You know, if I'm, I'm just saying, I think that we need to take the people that actually own the property into consideration on that. But I'm against the trees.
I hear you. I spent the last eight years walking around downtown Fort Wayne with trees and grates and it's great and there's not problems and, you know, does the fact that there's bird droppings, is that somewhat dependent on what trees are and whether they have berries and all that type of things that the birds are eating? And I think those are all things we need to take in consideration and I understand what Burn is doing, but, I mean, there's, but pardon me, it says if we're going to do something, let's do it, right? I mean, let's not just put new sidewalks in. If we're going to make it attractive, if we're going to make an impact in our downtown, I think we need to look at all these elements. So there is a maintenance issue, you're absolutely right. The other thing, I mean, Wall Street corridor in Fort Wayne is very nice and that's been done now for several years. I don't know what they're, how they maintain it, but it's not deteriorating.
What kind of trees did they use there?
Probably like what we did on the Plaza and according to what we put on the Plaza, Tony, those aren't supposed to have a big root system or anything, are they, where they're going to heap?
You're sticking old trees around, there's going to heat the sidewalks and all that stuff. These are bred and developed to only grow two feet wide and go straight up. And, you know, how, whatever you decide, they're developed and bred to grow to that certain specification that you want. And you pick that tree based on how you want it to look. It can be 10 feet tall and kind of have a little bit of a canopy to it, or they can be tall, straight, you know, kind of evergreen spiral cutters. It's not just a carnivorous tree that grows to 60, 70 feet tall, they're engineered to 20 feet and then they stop growing.
I have noticed these trees though, in the fall, cover the water grates, keeps water from draining very well. Those little leaves just all pack around the, I've cleaned off several this past fall. Good point.
Would, would you like for Main Street to approach the business owners downtown and get their feedback on trees? I mean, is that something that, because ultimately, like that's going to fall on them for maintenance.
Swing it, snow removal, getting their people in and out.
If Main Street approaches downtown business owner, I'd like to also include our street department of public works of what's the maintenance of a tree can, when they're doing snow removal or those kind of things so that we've got input from, I mean, we mentioned this morning, beauty takes some work and trees would be a lovely addition, but kind of understanding from everybody's point of view, what are the pros and cons of something like a tree?
I think planting trees or bushes is just like your home. Eventually you got to redo it or keep a constant maintenance on it to keep it to a certain point so it's not growing out and busting up the concrete and, you know, getting to a point where it's a problem.
I only heard a little bit of the bird conversation. I don't think adding six or eight trees is going to be an issue. Birds are going to be there whether there are trees there or not. I was just, spent the last week in downtown Peru, not a tree in sight and, you know, the building I was in was completely covered with pigeons and their activity. So I don't know that trees would necessarily cause an influx in bird population, causing hassle and...
I mean, I think, all these are great points. Like we have to know what the downtown business owners want, we have to know what we're capable of doing, right? But I got to go back to when this whole thing started and we started talking about downtown and the streetscapes and we had these meetings, we had conversations with our community and this was a part of it. And they all said, we want trees. So if it's not feasible, if there's other reasons, then I think we need to be able to explain that. That's why I'm kind of like, well, this is where we started, we should pursue this path unless it's not financially feasible.
But also, this is an artist rendition, we had an artist rendition of the Madison Street project and then we made it what we wanted and I think we're all pretty happy with the outcome and the final use and I think it's just a process. We should start to go down.
I understand that, I'm, we had an artist rendering of Madison Street with all the whistles and bells, I'm just saying, maybe we practicalize it. I'm not saying get rid of trees or not have trees, but I don't want to come in $200,000 over budget or if we have $150,000 to step towards this, how far can we, maybe not design, we have our whistles and bells, maybe not design for whistles and bells, but how far can we go with the $150,000?
I think that the design committee this morning, this on the picture was that original bells and whistles list and the idea for this is very much pared down, like you said, knowing that the Plaza is our focal point. Can there be some elements pulled out of that so that downtown has some continuity? This is, this is a lot.
It was always the intention that the sidewalk portion of the streetscape was going to be a pared down version of the Plaza. We never intended to extend the spitting finishes of the Plaza out into the street. But we also wanted them all tied together to lead back to the Plaza, which is the main drag, we're made for now there.
So what's Council want to recommend this evening?
That's the comment I was asking, what is it that you're looking for?
Well, maybe, maybe what you do is you make a commitment that you're going to proceed with streetscapes, but you've not settled on the final aspects or the details of what that is and you commit a dollar amount towards streetscapes based on whatever funding you have available. If you have funding that's already been set aside for the OCRE grant and you're not going to pursue the grant, but you got the local match funds available, that could be a funding source. You've got the capital campaign contributions, that could be a second, community foundation funds. And then if there's any other funds that you've either put in your budget for this year or if you want, look at whether there's any other additional funds, it could be an additional appropriation if you chose to go that route. You may not know that until you have a little more details finalized in terms of what you're actually going to do.
I think what Jeremy really wanted me to bring up tonight was, he's just looking for a commitment of one way or the other, he's, we're going to have to do something in front of the loft apartments. What do you want me to do? You want me to just pour concrete? You want me to pour concrete so that it's temporary, you want me to pour concrete and that's going to be the permanent effect so you got to do streetscaping? So just give me, let me know what I'm working with.
Does he have any money in his budget that he has allocated for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
So right now, what we're looking at is the money that was set aside for the OCRE grant plus whatever remains in the foundation capital campaign fund.
So maybe a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, are we willing to spend all of it between Monroe and Madison?
On one side of the street.
And you got five blocks to go.
On both sides of the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Does he have anything committed for the sidewalks, city sidewalks, for, I don't see a discur?
Well, I...
No.
I understand why he can't.
Because it's going to mess with throughout town. I don't, I don't want to do that because if we spend all that now, then by July, I get somebody who wants to get on the program, I get help.
I agree with you.
And wasn't Jeremy's recommendation that he'd like to head south, tie into Five Points so that it can...
He told me that he would like to see us get at least within a half block of Five Points. Not knowing exactly what Five Points is going to look like yet, he said if we just get down to the closest alley to Five Points and stop there and then we can tie that last bit in when the roundabout or whatever it is is done.
And how much time do we have to get there? Two years?
2021.
We have some time to...
Do we got Madison?
I think maybe what we do is we, if we can kind of, let's get prices of each different type of a feature. What's it going to cost per tree with grates? What's it going to cost for pavers, whether we go four pavers wide or six pavers wide? Let's just get, and let's get some of the concrete prices, let's add in our lights and let's see what, how much everything is and we can kind of work back from there.
But I think tonight, we need to make that commitment.
Yeah.
We need, we need to have a motion that we are committed to move forward with this project to, as I said, tied into Five Points and we have a timeline between now and 2021, '22. I'm in favor of moving forward too. I just don't want to make this motion, this is the only thing, I don't want to make this motion and then three months from now, it comes back here and it says, we're moving forward with this, this is how much it costs for the money. That's all I'm saying. I felt like that happened kind of on the Madison Street or maybe I missed something on that part, but I felt like it got to that point that we committed that we're going to do it and then it came back and said, this is how much it's going to cost for the money.
Everything is like that unfortunately right now in a good economy. Talk to Kevin, talk to Kevin about the water plant.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that it was over, I'm just saying that it came back and says, here it is, now we got to pay for it and we approved it and then it comes back and says, you approved it.
So what do you recommend, Tyler?
I'm recommending that someone decide on how it's going to happen and then go get estimates, like you said, but I'd like it to come back.
For approval?
Approval before we start.
Well, that's not my, well, that's not what my recommendation was tonight, that it wouldn't come back for approval.
We're more so, apart from Melissa, we're all volunteers. So we're more so looking for, are we going to spend the next five years and get all this figured out and with you guys not having any interest in it and me wasting my time as a volunteer doing this? Or do I know that you guys are behind it and want to move forward with it, melling that we're going to come back with a little bit more of a design and a recommendation pared down from what we already have picked and chosen from First Street, Monroe Street and Madison Street? Or are we just spinning our wheels and you guys are focused on Sixth Street? I, you know, that's your big thing.
Because we did reach a point where it did get sidetracked and that's what we're really trying to bring back into focus.
Well, I think a lot of the, a lot of the public, when that was kind of put out there, was excited about having that look downtown, having something to...
Well, just the new sidewalks and streetlights on Monroe Street and First Streets, I mean, I get complimented on all the time, I mean, it's going to definitely enhance the downtown.
It got sidetracked because of utility work, like the new water main and the tap.
Well, that's part of the project, that didn't sidetrack it, that's just, that had to be done first.
Had to be done first.
Had to be done first. But I think, Tyler, you're absolutely right, from tonight, we're not just, okay, go do it, it's done. Plans need to be brought back, you know, Main Street has not fully visualized this.
Right, so what I'm going to suggest is that we know that we have roughly $200,000 that we can put towards this without tapping into other things that have been budgeted. This is the $60,000 that was used for earmarked for the grant and then plus the remainder of funds, which is in the community foundation, okay? So if we were to say, what do we get, to our volunteer team to say, hey, what So if we were to say, what do we get, to our volunteer team, to say, hey, what can you do, in working with Jeremy, based on what's, you know, what needs to be done infrastructure-wise yet, to say, okay, what can we do for $200,000? And what if, you know, does it matter if you took trees out? Is it, does it, you have option one is pavers, what about, I'm just throwing this out there, because if we're gonna go with gray pavers, can we do gray stamped concrete? I mean, I would, I would say, here's your options, right? Here's $200,000, here's what we think we can do, here's how far it would stretch, here's what you can do for those dollars, the, if you went with this option, we might be able to go further, but it wouldn't be as nice. I think, is that a reasonable, if we just say?
Well, I think long term, you gotta look at it, if you're saying, what can we get for $200,000 for one block, one side of the street only, realizing that you also have to do.
No, 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 that's not what.
That's not what you're saying?
No.
Okay, how far can you go with your?
We're not saying do one block for 200,000, we're saying how far, how many blocks can we do for 200,000?
Okay.
Based on both sides.
What level of options can you have the whole way down to 200,000?
Okay.
Is it concrete and light poles? Is it concrete, pavers and light poles? Have the benches later? Is it no benches, is it no trees?
Right, if we remove the trees, how far can we, can we stretch it further?
Just basically each thing needs to be quartered separately so.
Everything needs to be itemized so we can piece it together.
Yeah, you pick and choose and put it together, what your budget allows.
I'd say I'm all for that, I'm not, I don't want you to waste your time either.
No, I don't know.
I'm for, I don't, don't get me wrong here, I'm for moving forward with it. I love an itemized, and then we can know how far we can get, and then it'll also help us budget in the future, so every time we do a block, we know how much it's gonna. And I'm in favor of not having an engineer design it, I think we've got enough information, and we know where we're going.
Would Main Street like to have a council member set in on your meetings for this design stuff, as a representative from council?
Jeremy Gilbert does a good job with that, he's been off and on meeting, but.
I think neither way, instead of saying, hey, here's how it's gonna stretch, is, give us your best estimate on one block or a half a block, right? And if there's the desired, what you want, but then there's also the required, but here's the minimum. If we can't have all this, this is the minimum thing we want. And here's the costs for that half a block. And then we can come back and say, okay, all right, how many half blocks do we wanna do, based on either of those options, the desired and the required, right? And we can look at using some of the money that we think we have, or is there other monies that we can put towards this and extend it and go even further?
And that goes Monroe to Madison, and then Madison to Jefferson, and then Jefferson to Adams, and to do it the way we want, it might have to be that way. Does that seem fair?
Maybe just start off simplistic, just get the prices and put the factors together, and then start working, you know.
Tony, you can work with Jeremy on that, can't you? I mean, you're, that's right up here.
Yeah, when we have a meeting, I can all copy him in.
And like, that makes sense, like, here's, we've said what we want, and this is what it's gonna cost per block or per half block, at a very minimum, you need to do this to make it worth anybody's time. And then we can figure out how much can we get done this year.
We could, we could also, too, consider, you know, Madison, Madison to Jefferson as the core of the downtown, I guess, and then pare it down from Monroe to Jackson and Jefferson and Adams, to where maybe those outskirts still have lights, and maybe lights, pavers, and the concrete, and that's it. Maybe the benches and a couple trees, or whatever we end up with, are more.
Centrally located.
Centrally located around the plaza, I guess, and it kinda diminishes down as you go out farther.
Or we could, or we could add benches and trash cans.
Down the road.
Down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll look at it, we'll see what you can come up with.
Did you come up with a design for bike racks? Maybe a small one, I've seen some around in Fort Wayne that aren't unattractive, you know what I mean? Have you got something like that? Because we're getting the demand for that.
There's one in our furniture.
One with the, that we had kinda picked out for, that matched with all the stuff on the plaza.
Okay.
We just didn't buy any of them.
Just need Cory.
But we need to.
You're gonna have to. The ordinance, the, the lights aren't allowed on.
But we're not.
So we're not gonna pull bike racks on the sidewalk until you can, or you buy the money walk.
The $60,000, I think that's, with the ordinance?
Yeah.
I agree, I agree.
But we're not, we don't need to do that right now.
You're at the one first, you know, put a bike rack there.
But I don't think we need to do that right now.
But when it comes time to use it, when we have to, yes.
Yes. As long as you know that we're, we're moving forward. So I, I don't know if it's a motion or a request, I guess I would make a request that you come back, I mean, you shared with us what, I appreciate what you shared with us, what you would like to see, and how you pared that down. If we could ask that you would take the next step, working with Jeremy, to say, okay, what's the cost per half block? Desired, required, then it's up to us to fund it, figure out how far we can make it go.
And thank you for doing what you're doing, we love what we see on Monroe Street, Madison Street, down First Street, and we're tying all this together, and it is looking really good. Thank you for giving your time to give us those options. The design committee of Main Street definitely keeps busy, between streetscaping, between and judging the facade things, I know they worked on that today, and, you know, they're in here quite regularly, so, yeah, I agree with Matt, thank you, Tony, and the rest of your team. Okay, so we good to go on this then? This is a recommendation, you got that, I mean, y'all three hear that? Good to go on that. Brian, thank you so much for coming in tonight and sharing.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving as the new president.
No problem.
Next thing, I have event forms. Oh, she has some event forms that I think Mr. Koshell might have turned in?
Yep.
Do you not have a rev, tax relief?
No.
No.
If there's an issue with it, we'll pay back with it, we need to get ahold of them.
Kikianga Festival, Motorsports, Taste of Decatur, that is all to take place between August fourteenth and eighteenth through the eighteenth throughout downtown Decatur. It's all part of the Kikianga Festival.
Yeah, we're doing one thing different this year. Last year, we had the Motorsports, at the same time we did German Fest, we moved the German Fest up to the twenty-third, I can't remember what the date is, it's a week before, what is it, the sixteenth? We're gonna do the Motorsports Show on a Thursday night now, along with Taste of Decatur, and then we're having the Bulldogs as a concert, so we get the people downtown for motorcar sports, they'll have all the food vendors, and then the show at seven, so.
The show on the plaza?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we're gonna close down the streets, it's all Kikianga Week, you know, and then the Friday morning, we have the education thing over at the Riverside for the kids, and bring all the kids and the carvers and all that kinda stuff, so, that's what the application is. The street closures and things, I can discuss that with Jeremy.
He's got the street closings attached here, and he's already got it all signed off from all the department heads, so with that.
Make the motion accept.
Thank you. Motion and second, accept this event form, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to recuse.
Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have this evening is to discuss something that we've been working on since, well, seems like forever, but most prominently since May, when we kicked off the capital campaign for Hannah Nutman Park. And we're to the point where, with donations that we've, with what we have and with what we believe we will have coming in, and with what the city has set aside, that we have to decide whether or not we're going to proceed with building that park, so that, so that ball can be played there next, not this coming summer, but in the summer of 2020, or if we're gonna delay it a year, or what? If we're going to start the construction in 2019, it's time for us to put out to bid some of the work that's gonna take place, and we've kinda got the park itself broken into four different schedules or phases, and the first portion would be the earthwork and the utilities, which would be the storm sewers, the sanitation sewers, and the water lines. The water lines, though, we actually pulled the money out of that, because Jeremy said his crews can do the water lines. But the sanitary sewers, and the storm sewers, and all the earthwork. Jeremy said that as far as the earthworks, the elevation information from Miller Landscape, or Miller.
Land Survey.
Yeah, Land Survey, he should, he should have that within the next week, and be ready to advertise and put that portion out to bid. That first portion is $477,000 and change, and would likely go under construction right in early July. And I've talked with Decatur Boys Baseball, who's likely going to play at Monmouth again, most likely. I've talked with Decatur Girls Softball, Deb Shannon says they'll do whatever, whatever they need to do to make this happen, they wanna see the park happen, and if they have to shorten their season and be out of Hannah Nutman by first of July, they would do so. And Trenton Shinner's here tonight, and I've talked to Trenton on the phone, Trenton, raise your hands. Trenton is the president of the Decatur Men's Slow Pitch Softball. And I've talked to Trenton a few times in this past year, and Trenton's very cooperative with the understanding that the men's field is probably best served if we move it somewhere else besides in the Hannah Nutman Park area. And right now, as I talked to Trenton this morning, the two places that are kinda on the radar would either be Kikianga Park or McMillan Field, behind Bungie there, off Monmouth Road. And, you know, he, right now, I don't think we, either one really have a true preference or anything, but Jeremy is committed to the men's softball league, that wherever they go, we'll, we'll make the field so that it's worthy of playing on, we'll put up the home run fence, whatever depths you want them, you know, and, and we didn't say this today, but at McMillan Field, you know, I don't know if we can even flip that field, I mean, I, you, the possibilities are endless, I think. At Kikianga, the nice thing about that is Jeremy has already had Miller, how can I say it, Miller.
Land Survey.
Land Survey. Look at that, and there's room for another field out there. Now, not that we have the funds to build another field this year, but there are, there is room to where we could build another men's slow pitch field out there. The downside of it is, it's in a flood plain, and we get a lot, when we get high water, they wouldn't be able to play ball, along with the, being so close to the river, it's a pretty mosquito infested area sometimes in the middle of the summer when it's really muggy. So, again, the men, regardless, they're willing to work with us and help find another place to move them. As Trenton was telling me today, and a lot of communities, the slow pitch softball thing has just kinda went bye-bye over time, that. Well, did you say, like, ban work?
Uh, the past five years, Austrian, ban work, I think Waindale has small league, there's been close to half a dozen leagues closed up, so I just kinda wanted to hear the discussion tonight, make sure there was a commitment to keep an adult league somewhere here in town.
Yep, yep. So, and Trenton's been, Trenton's been in on the very initial meeting, when it goes all the way back, I'm gonna say about five years ago, the first time we met, about even doing a project like this, and from the very get-go, he's been real supportive about, yeah, we'll move wherever you need us to go, what you just, as long as you get us a place to play, we'll move. So, I appreciate that. Anyhow, what we have to decide is, really, tonight, we need to decide if we're gonna move forward with this project this year. I think we're ready.
Well, you've done the due diligence from yourself, Mayor, the committee, it's worked tirelessly to put together this project, you've worked hard in the fundraising, and we have enough, in my opinion, now, that we can move forward with this Phase One in July.
We will need to ultimately move some funding around within city coffers from the general fund, maybe to Ray Day or somewhere, Phyllis has examined that, and there is ample funding that we can move around to get through this. And in the meantime, for the media's sake, we still need to promote giving to Hannah Nutman, you know, our million dollar capital campaign, we're still, we're kinda stuck right now at about that $530,000 to $540,000 level, and while I've talked a lot of other businesses and individuals who have indicated that they're gonna come through, it hasn't happened yet, and I'd sure like to get the community kinda fired back up again like we were here over the last summer months, I mean, is that a winter here, it's a little hard on people to get all excited about giving money to a baseball field, but we need to create that excitement again and continue the fundraising, so.
I think that, I mean, go back to the funding, the aspect of it, right? So, last year, $250 was budgeted from the city, this year, $250 is budgeted for the city, that's 500, so right there's enough to get moving on.
This first portion.
One A, right?
Yep.
Plus, you have what's been committed, now it's not all been collected.
Right.
But it's been committed from donors, you said $530?
Roughly.
Roughly, right? So that's more than enough to get well into even Phase One B.
Mm-hmm.
But city council did commit initially a million, right? Because that's what you're saying, we need to.
Well, and like I said, Phyllis has some funds that she can shift around to get something to that.
That's what I mean, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Because it's that difference, it's that extra $500,000 that we have, it just wasn't part of our.
Budgeting, yes.
It's money that's in the storehouse, that's it.
Right.
Okay, so that takes you up to 1.5, which takes you.
And then if you look at, if you look at the, get down into the Phase C, and you're gonna get into, actually into next year, you know, and next year's another whole budget year, so.
And if we have more people donate?
Yep. I think, I think we're gonna be, I think we will be fine, and we can always pull some things back, and a lot of these things, we hope are budgeted to the high side, you know, some of these are done by, some of these prices were quoted from outside sources, and some of this work can, we can hire local and get it done cheaper, we think, so.
The other thing is, some of these items could be funded through a DNR grant, which is another.
We're still working for it. Yeah, there's several grants that Melissa's looked at, we actually already applied for one through I&amp;M and have been turned down. They want their funds, I think it wasn't to go more toward educational things, is that what you said? Yeah. There's one through Major League Baseball that Melissa's going to apply to, there's one through Scots, the turf people, the grass people, fertilizer people. We've applied to that one already, it's a national thing, and we have no idea how we'll come in, but we've applied. And then the DNR, yeah, there's one through the DNR that we could get up to $250,000, and it's the same DNR grant that we used when we did the, same Mary's Nature Preserve, and we feel pretty good about that, but nothing's certain with grants, that's the thing, you just, you don't know. But when we, we drove down to Indianapolis and met with the state side, Bob Bronson from the DNR, and while, you know, he, he thought it was a no-brainer, but yet, he didn't have to say, it's the federal DNR that has, makes the call.
Mayor, you looking for a motion to proceed or proceed Phase One? Where are we at?
That's what I think we're ready to do, is if we're going to move forward with this project this year, it's time for us to proceed with the first phase of Phase One.
Before we do that, can I ask two questions?
Please do.
Is Jeremy?
Jeremy's on board.
Ready to go?
Yep.
This is the start of, in fifth, July, has there been a conversation with?
Yes, I'm sorry, I guess I kinda started to talk about that. Boys Baseball's most likely going to play at Monmouth, and the Girls Softball, Deb Shannon said they, they won't even make their schedule until they know what we're doing tonight. If they know that we want them out of there by the fourth of July, she says we'll be out of there. We'll either figure another place to play, or we'll have a shortened season, and we'll be done by the fourth of July, and I explained the same thing to Trenton, and we'll work that out going forward with the men, so we can make it work.
The only thing would be, once, once this. The other thing would be, once this start date is released, I'm sure a lot of people are aware of the feelings from the adult leagues on the Hannah Nutman project. Will there also be a proposed end date released for Hannah Nutman project? And possibly when we will have a replacement placed to play?
Fair question.
Once you release that July start date, right in the middle of?
I know of a few people that are gonna...
There's gonna be a few.
Yep. Facebook whiners.
Hopefully, there is a projected end date for the complex and the new home.
For the Hannah Nutman complex, there's actually, and I kind of explained this a little bit today to you. This Phase 1 gets us in there and gets us playing. You know, it has the concession stands, it has all the backstops, the dugouts, the home run fences, has all that. Then the Phase 2 would be where we would come back and asphalt the parking lots and finish out the trail system that's gonna be in there. And that might not be for one to two years, depending on how much, how our budgets work out here. And then the final phase is an unknown phase, and that would be whether or not to put up LED lights. LED lights on six fields would run about $864,000. And we need, you know, more time. And we want to get it built and then decide whether or not we want to go to that effort of putting up the lights, you know, with daylight savings time, starting the games a half an hour earlier. And you really almost don't need lights out there for local ballgames. Now, if we're gonna utilize it on weekends for travel tournaments throughout the entire summer, then I can justify the lights. So, but we don't have to, we won't make that decision for a while, in my opinion. So, when will Hannah Nutman be completely done with all the bells and whistles? It might...
Or just get to play ball?
We won't play ball out there next year. Yeah. If we start this, we're committing ourselves to, we've gotta get grass growing. So, and we are putting in an irrigation system out there for the media's sake also, so that once we get the earthwork done, the very first thing on that Phase 2 is to put in the irrigation system and get the grass planted so that we can fertilize the crap out of it, excuse me, I didn't say it that way, fertilize the dickens out of it and get that grass to thicken up. So, motion?
I salute.
Uh, what? What's the motion?
To proceed. Forward with, looking for bids for Phase 1A, right?
Okay. So, I gotta have a motion to move forward with the earthwork and utility work for the Hannah Nutman ballfields. All, all in favor?
Who's their second?
Do I have a second?
Who actually made the motion?
Matt.
Matt.
I'll second.
Ken seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. That's a big decision. That's one we've been waiting to even bring to the meeting for a long time. So... That's everything on my plate. Let's go back. Our department heads kind of lean back there tonight. Some of them are at road school. Chief of Police is out learning to be a chief again. Mayhem's in charge. Mike, what do you got to say?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Well done. Bless.
Jim had a, still on light duty at his car. He had a doctor's appointment and some physical therapy today. Chase therapy from light to aggressive today. So, he was kind of whining when he come back from the station, but the worst case is he doesn't go back now until April 16th. So, we were hoping he'd be back on shift by the end of March, but we're already down looking to get April before his next doctor visit. So, we're guys short every third day, but, you know, we're managing to get him around. But Jim is in physical therapy and things are progressing.
I hit him up out in the hallway. I heard they tried to get him. I mean, he got both of his arms up about this high.
Yeah, he's just whining in tears. Just help him get his arm where it's supposed to be. And he'll whine and cry all day. He's snout about here and movement. But they get, you know, from kind of a medium physical therapy to now it's pretty aggressive. So, he's not, he's gonna be doing real well.
Okay. Bill?
No.
Kurt?
Can we make the announcement?
What's the announcement? Oh, yeah. Well, I guess we can. Yes, you're gonna make that announcement?
We have found a replacement for Sharon Brown. Erin Hirely is shifting from one side of the building to the other.
Yeah, Kevin Booze and Hill Booze. So, yeah, we posted that job internally. Erin Hirely put in for it. Kurt met with her and said that she'll be an excellent fit over there. She won't be moving over to the Building and Planning Department until we get her replacement and get that person trained. So, it may be a month or two before we get that done. The sooner Kevin can get that job posted internally and see if there's anyone from within. If not, then we would, then advertise it on the outside and fill that position. So, yeah, congratulations, Erin. Anything else, Kurt? Kurt, you said this morning, you told me the tires that cottonwood, they have until the 10th to get those tires out of there, right?
They have to until the 10th to get the tires out.
And then what? There we are. The guy just won't go away, will he? I might send him a text message. He likes my text messages. Carrie, what do you got? All right. Kevin? You've had enough today, haven't you? Melissa?
We still have graphic tickets on sale for the Paul Mulholland Tickets Department Hannah Nutman. If you'd like to buy one or many, we still have those available. We anticipate this week that the tickets for the Murphy Dill Company logo on sale. We'll have tickets available online and at City Hall. They are returning to the market on Wednesday, May 8th.
Ticket prices are the same as they were the last year when we had it?
Twenty-two to $45, with a VIP option included. The tickets from that will benefit the Hannah Nutman project.
Yep.
And the Design Committee scored the rabbit facade applications today. So, the next council meeting, the goal is to make recommendations for those projects to be funded as decided by the design committee.
Thank you, Design Committee. Appreciate that. Phyllis, I think you have something?
I just need to make a matter of record, the city's 2018 cash and investment statement, I have a petition.
Make a matter of record. Got a motion over here from Craig, second from Matthew. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else? Tim? Council members?
Just an update. We had a grid meeting last week. I don't know what day it was, Tuesday? About Arts Commission. Wiley was there, Mary was there. I don't know. I think it was very informative. We had a lot of good feedback. Things will take into advisement. The next step is really to do a, I would say, a draft ordinance. So... Look at Tim. I can, I will do my absolute, I will do my absolute best to put together. I'll work with you for a format, and then I'll pass it over to you. I'll draft it. You can fix it.
If you can find somebody that's done it.
Well, I've got one.
Okay.
Fort Wayne's is really good.
All right. Fort Wayne's is really good.
So, the only thing I would say up, just because you brought up the idea of the general fund moving to Rainy Day. I think, kind of like any of the council members, I think there used to be a state requirement that said how much had to be kept in the general fund. I think that's not there anymore, right? Has that been removed?
It's kind of a rule of thumb, I think, but there's no requirement.
Can we just recommend that you keep at the minimum of 15% of your personal?
Okay.
So, like, I mean...
I just didn't know if...
I have that for...
I know. I just didn't know if it would be, if it would make sense to to adopt something, I don't know.
I don't know how you really could, because you never know what to expect. I mean, I mean, I think how we prepare the budget kind of shows that. I don't know how you could make a commitment that that's gonna happen.
Well, I guess the reason I bring this up is so that we can look at, okay, what, what is the health above and beyond that? And is there a better use for that than fitting in the general fund? Before we make a commitment to move it out of one thing or another. I realize that has, that's a bigger process to move it away from the general fund.
Well, you made a suggestion to me that we all kind of need to go through Municipal General Fund 101, you know, to understand it. Because when I talk with Phyllis, and she kind of shows me things, it's a little easier to understand, you know, like it looks like you have this many million dollars.
Right.
But we're paying all the salaries out of there. We're paying, you know, so it's not really, there's not really that much there. That's the balance. I mean, you gotta...
No, I get that. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Like, but I think that, and maybe that's what I'm looking for, is maybe it's an educational, maybe we can all get together. I don't know if we can do that at a separate meeting, which is a letting us ask questions.
We'll stay forward to council, they all do have meetings every year.
I meant with you.
Oh, just with me. I can, me too.
Does that make sense?
Keep it simple. How often do you want to be updated on something like that? A quarter? Once a quarter?
Well, about being updated. I think first, I mean, I think that's a good idea too, but I'm thinking just the
Understanding.
Thing helps us understand the cash flow in and out of the general fund, because there are, we make a budget, we commit to a budget, and how much that's gonna be, right? That's kind of irrelevant, because that money's not coming in yet, and we don't know until the money comes in. So, I get it, that the balance is not really the balance.
Right.
There's the account.
Balance, and then there's the appropriate...
And there's the usable, right? So, it's like when you look at your bank account and you can say, here's what you have, but here's actually what's usable, because this has already been committed.
Right.
I think having a better understanding of that makes sense. And so, I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to have some type of meeting that is more of an educational nature outside of the normal city council meeting. I don't know. Just kind of throw it out there.
I think Phyllis would be more than willing to do that with any of you. And I would suggest any of you who want to do that, maybe pair up in twos. We can't have any more than two of you really come in at a time. No, unless it was a training. Pardon? We could do a training if you wanted to go that route.
It's kind of like looking at your checkbook when you get online and look at the balance that the bank shows.
Versus what you have.
Versus looking at your ledger after you've subtracted checks that haven't cleared.
Right, exactly. Commitments that have not, you know, just the balance is not really necessarily the usable balance. It's there. Because it's easy for me, I'm gonna be first to admit, it's easy for me to look at the balance and say, that's pretty healthy.
Yeah.
And the reason it's healthy, let's be clear, the reason it's healthy is because there's, our management heads have done a great job of, you know, managing their budgets. They stay within the means, and the surplus, remember, every year, the surplus from those gets
Diverts.
Kind of pushed to the general fund.
Diverts back to the general fund.
Right? And we've been in situations where we've not had a healthy general fund. We do, but the balance does not necessarily mean that's all usable. And that's, that's my point, is being able to say, hey, let's have a clear understanding throughout the board of what our tolerance is, our threshold of no lower than, is 15% appropriate? Does it need to be more than that? But then, knowing on that, the inflows and outflows, how much of that is actually available? That's just been building up, that could be better. My personal opinion, from a stewardship perspective, is that if we're sitting on money that we don't necessarily need to commit to other things, then we need to get it to work for our community. Above and beyond what's absolutely required in our general fund. So, that's why I'm...
Shouldn't just be sitting.
Right. So, that's why I'm suggesting that now, if it is us ones and twos going in, whatever works the best, that's the use of your time as well. But...
Isn't that something that could be done in the executive session, those decisions are made, it's just an information session?
It's a work session. I mean, you could, but it's not, I mean, you're not really making decisions. You could advertise it as a regular meeting. It wouldn't be necessarily executive session, but it's more of a work session where you're not really making any decisions. You're discussing how the budget works and...
Or it could be like, I don't remember, 11 or something of all those that were there, it is a training. You know, and she is, Phyllis is the teacher consultant. And that can be done in the executive session.
And it gives you an opportunity to ask questions, so that you have a better understanding of how that works.
Phyllis and Wendy and Bobby do a great job in there. They keep each other, they keep each other in line. Yeah, they're, they watch every little thing. Public? Anything from public? Any comments from public this evening? Anthony, you got anything? Good to see you. If not?
Motion to pay the claims?
Second. Have a motion and a second to pay the claims.
I hate to be...
Boy works not allowed to see that?
Well, no, because you don't refuse to claim, do you?
That's true. Nope, he doesn't want the claims.
So, we have to make a motion.
Thank you. I want to make the motion, no.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second. Have a motion from Wiley and a second from Matt to pay the claims. For this time period, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And before we go to the next thing, do we want to set up a workshop or something or other to do this?
We can do that right now, can't we?
Okay.
We could set up an...
Outside here, yeah. Can we schedule with you, Phyllis? Okay. Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and two seconds to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.